Our next question will begin with Mr. Kowas. Will you be able to vote independently regardless of who contributed to your campaign?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, I think the contracting out of garbage has come up. And I did have contact with someone who's involved with one of the garbage companies that would like to bid. And in our conversation, he said, "Well, let me know when you have your next fundraiser." And I said, "Thank you, but no thank you." In order to even have the appearance and propriety, I'm not accepting any donations from anyone that would bid potentially on contracting out solid waste. And so, that's at least for solid waste. Quite honestly, all my donations have been from individuals, so I haven't got any corporate donations at all. And not that I haven't been asked. So, you can definitely count on me, I will not be influenced by any donations I get from builders, etc.
I can echo a lot of what David said. I too, anyone who makes a contribution to my campaign isn't buying anything with me. They're not guaranteed anything of any kind. When I was on the planning commission for eight years, it was a similar experience because I was appointed by a city council member. But I was fortunate that that council member never even once tried to influence any of my votes on the planning commission. I was my own man. And there were a number of times on the planning commission when I was the only no vote on some things. But I never got a call the next day from the council member saying, "Hey, what the heck were you doing?" So, definitely, if elected, I am my own man. Anyone who contributes is not buying anything with me.
That same possible bidder met with me, and I turned them down the same way. I have 400 people that have endorsed me. You'll see it on the brochure going out. They're all individuals. Many of them are neighbors and friends. Some of them 30, 40-year-old friends that live here. And they've given me the 10, and 20, and 15, and a couple a little more. But they're all from individuals. I would not take a donation from anybody that I thought might come before the city for a consideration in the future, period. And I've run my political life 20 years ago, 25 years ago, and my political life today, exactly the same way.
I'm gonna say I'm pretty fortunate because I got no endorsements. I refuse to take any endorsements. And I have not received a penny from an individual. I have not received any money from council members. So, would I be influenced by anybody? Definitely not, never have, never will. I've always had to prove myself to be excellent, and that's exactly what I want to stand by as my integrity.
I'm right there with Christine. I only received a few donations from friends, and those friends don't even live in Lincoln, so whatever they want doesn't really matter. I haven't had any endorsements by anybody. I will stand up for what the Lincoln citizens want, not for any big businesses want, because I feel we need to be a voice for you guys, not a voice for big businesses.
I too met with the waste people, and I too turned down the money. Well, they didn't offer me any money, so... But I am my own man. I stand on my record as a Chamber of Commerce board member and as a planning commission member. If I'm elected to the city council, I will weigh the facts. I will make the decision based on the merits of the case presented and what I feel is in the best interest of all the citizens of Lincoln. I don't represent a cause, I don't represent an area, or represent all the citizens of Lincoln, and I promise you that no one will influence my decisions. Will I take input from people? I will request input. I will seek input from all sides of all issues. But I will make the decision I feel is best for the citizens of Lincoln.
Well, that's just wrong. Dan stole my answer. The answer is very straightforward. Nobody influences my vote. As Dan said, you listen to everyone, you research, you understand every angle of what's before you, and you make the best decision in the best interest of Lincoln, always.
I would say neither money nor political ties to any individual, whether on council or not, will have any sway on my decisions. You have 12 years of my decision-making to rely on. I don't believe that's appropriate. And quite frankly, there are times in the past that I have accepted money from different sources and voted against those sources. Because you must do, if you are in this job, you must do the best for the citizens of Lincoln. You must protect this community and this community's integrity of decision-making.
Okay, for our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Quinca. If elected, would you support any new city taxes?
I didn't support Measure K two years ago, and I would be against supporting any new taxes unless it was a last resort. When the city is back up against the wall financially like we are, you have to consider all options. And I don't think that was done two years ago. So, my short answer to that question is no. I'm against any new taxes. No.
You stole my answer.
You could borrow my...
I'm gonna definitely say no. I think citizens, they work already hard enough to try to just stay afloat. It's just like I've always said too, it's the same thing. I refuse to even take any kind of tax money, so that's why I will not take the taxpayers, and I will be donating the city council salary back to the community. That's where tax dollars belong to.
No, I don't believe we should be raising taxes until we are properly spending the funds we have.
Mr. Cross?
No. The very short answer, and the answer to the question asked, was no. What people here are not thinking about, they don't have knowledge of, is that new assessments will come along. Be before them, lighting landscaping districts, new developments. We'll have assessment districts that will need to be approved. Those will be perceived as a new tax. So, in the way the question was asked, the answer is absolutely not. But those things that happen in the course of growth that need to be done to provide for services that that new addition brings along, the answer for those will probably be yes.
I do not support new taxes. It's interesting, people are going back two years to reach for Measure K. And in fact, what Measure K was, was a question to the citizens because we were given competing priorities of maintaining the police force and the fire force that we have. And we put that question to the citizens. I believe that any question of tax should always be before the citizens, not before the city council. And also, something that's not being mentioned here is the contracting out of garbage. The contracting out of garbage results in a backdoor tax. Trust me, I know. I lived in Loomis for six years. That was an incredible source of revenue, but it never went before the citizens. And in fact, what the FSC has proposed would also not go before the citizens. I have asked every time this has come up that it go before the citizens to make sure the citizens can make an informed decision because they currently enjoy low rates. We want to keep it that way. Well, I'm gonna have to sharply disagree here. No, absolutely no new taxes for the general fund. But, you know, it's one of the reasons I ran. You ask the question to the citizens if you're out of touch with the citizens. If you don't understand that some people don't have a job. If you don't understand that they're already paying too many taxes. And that's not a question that should be asked if you are in touch with the citizens and know their feelings on such matters. As far as a backdoor tax, I'd say it's baloney. That's absolutely baloney. There's no other way to say it. It's gonna save the city money, it's gonna save taxpayers' money. We will not, we're gonna look into it. But we won't do it if it's not gonna improve service and save the taxpayers' money. It just, it won't happen. So, no new taxes.
Okay, for our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Gilbert. What will you do to restore police and fire to adequate staffing levels?
Well, as I've said in all my literature, having served on the city council, having run a three-billion piece of Wells Fargo Bank, you can't do anything unless you have money. So, I think what we have to do is concentrate on getting money in quickly. And that's why I've been a very big proponent of taking the garbage service and converting it to a private contract which will bring this city something between $45 and $50 million over 20 years. I've gone to cities that have recently done this. They have legal opinions that it is proper, in the case of Lincoln, we will return that money to you in terms of more police, more fire, more library hours. And it's perfectly legal, and it's been tested. And so, anybody who disagrees with those facts should come up with some facts that contradict it.
I would say this is a really tough question because there's no doubt that us as the community, we have a certain expectation and a lifestyle when it comes to our police and fire. We definitely need to be able to keep our local police and fire here. But there's also many different options that can be looked at. Some of them, they're doing right now is with the dispatch in Rockland. That way, there's always somebody who can answer the phones. So, if there's a possibility where it would help with taxpayers, is contracting out a portion either with Placer County? I mean, even in my own neighborhood, I have Hillgrove police cars sitting in my own neighborhood. So, if we got Placer County cops sitting, cars sitting in my neighborhood, and everybody else, why can't we maybe work out a deal with our own city and the county?
I agree with Peter that we need to get some money now. It's a dangerous level that we sit at right now. We have closed fire stations with brand-new trucks sitting in at vacant. So, we need to really take a look at what the city needs to bring us up, and then determine from there what we need to do to bring our levels back up again. We need to definitely take a look at contracting out the dispatch, but I don't believe that contracting out farming and police is gonna be a good idea. We're gonna lose our response time, and I wouldn't ask anyone to have to put that on and have to hold your breath to wait for someone to get to your house, whether or not they're gonna make it or not.
Yes, the farming out of the waste could be a great way to put money into the general fund. That's one way. I mean, if you don't reduce the rates, then you have the money to go to the general fund. The other thing is, the only way you can increase fire, or police and fire protection is to put more money into the general fund. There's a short-term and long-term answer to that. Short-term, we work with region builders, BIA, the people that bring businesses to communities, and find out what kind of regionalized businesses can serve us. For example, I would suggest strongly that we work hard to recruit a regional outlet mall. So, we're not competing with other businesses in the area, and that would bring business from the surrounding area in sales tax dollars and money to our general fund. So, I would strongly urge that we find businesses like retail outlet malls that would energize our general fund before we start building more homes, which will also bring more businesses.
They've all answered fairly correctly. The only way to return police and fire to the levels of safety that we need is to find additional monies within the general fund. No doubt about that. Could the potential of franchising out solid waste bring that money? Yes, it could. Could that be perceived as a backdoor tax despite being legal? Yes, it could. What we're doing right now to augment police and fire is we are growing the reserve force. We are growing, we've just graduated a new class of citizens on patrol. Those folks are additional eyes and ears and staff to help out the officers that we have now. We have great mutual aid agreements with the surrounding communities, as you saw during the tanker fire response. We run to everyone's aid, safe to some Placer County, to Ray. We go to each other's aid all the time. We fill each other's firehouses all the time. Rockland, Roseville, and Lincoln are working together. We are not considering contracting out dispatch. We are considering merger of dispatch.
And Paul, I like your answer. And you know, it's funny about legal opinions because you can get two on any given subject that completely contradict each other. So, we will deal with the facts when the facts are presented to us. But dispatch cooperation, we've already been doing that. In fact, during the tanker fire, we were able to co-locate our dispatchers in Rockland and still have the service to the community. As far as contracting police, actually, we've already prioritized that. Out of the FSC plan, which we've heard that we're not supporting, which I'm trying to figure that one out, we've already done that. And we've looked at that police contract, and to provide the same level of service, it's actually probably less expensive because of Measure F, which guarantees that police, or the sheriff salaries are kept at a certain level. Our police and fire have done a fantastic job about negotiating their contracts with us to reduce the cost and to provide additional service to the community so we don't suffer further reductions. But we do need to grow our base. We need to grow our economic development core, and we can't just chase the rainbow. We have to methodically go after those things that will do it. May you restate the question, please? Gotcha, I'm sorry.
If elected, would you support... No. What will you do to restore police and fire to adequate staffing levels?
Well, there's no easy answer to this. There really isn't. Per capita, our revenue is way down compared to other cities, and there is no easy answer. And I want to say that I do very much appreciate those that put their lives on the line for us. I believe they should be compensated very well. But, one of the things, a fact that came to my attention, and I think it's a fact that citizens should demand an answer to, is why is it that the city of Lincoln, and I'm speaking of police, why do we have the same amount of officers on the street? And yet, our total budget, total compensation, is $4 million more than it was 10 years ago. So, 2002, same amount of officers, $4 million more. Why is that? And that's something I don't have a direct answer to, but I think that's one thing that needs to be addressed. But, things we can do, we need to expand our base, we need to reduce spending, and...
I'm gonna go fast.
Yes, it does.
For our next question, we'll begin... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you were first. Apologize.
Both who have lived in Lincoln their whole lives, and those that have moved in in the last decade, want Lincoln to be like Mayberry. We want to know our police, we want to know our fires personnel. But in these financial times, we have to think out of the box. We share records and dispatch software with Rockland, called Sunbridge Systems. That's why we went to Rockland during the tanker fire. We can take a Lincoln dispatcher and drop them in Rockland, and it can work just fine, and vice versa. We should consider partnering with Rockland as an alternative to contracting with the sheriff for the short term. We could have one fire chief instead of two, and we can increase the combined police force. Crime knows no borders. Crime is an issue across Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, and all the surrounding areas. They want to see us succeed because our success helps them. The tri-cities aren't connected, and I think we need to look at all revenues besides contracting out.
Okay, for our next question, we'll begin with Ms. Colton. How would you work to build the unfinished parks throughout Lincoln?
Say it, I'm sorry. Repeat that one more time.
How would you work to build the unfinished parks throughout Lincoln?
I think we kind of touched on this a little earlier with that question. Right now, I know far as with our budget, we are currently saving up, getting it all saved up and prepared for the preparation. Mr. Short has already gone into a little bit more detail than what I'm gonna give. Again, I sat on the Parks and Recs Committee. So, I'm just gonna say, as long as we just keep properly budgeting, putting money back into the fund, and that way, we can have this future parks bill. Again, because of costs and bidding out, you know, that was something that Mr. Short addressed. So, I would say that, just proper budgeting, saving up for it.
I know in the immediate future, we've already, I know the council is partnering up with Lincoln Crossing, at least for the Lincoln Crossing parks, with the 501(c). They are planning the big regional park that will be shared to all of Lincoln. I believe continued support with, working with that type of fundraising, we could probably work together to get other parks in Lincoln taken care of as well. Also, we need to take a look at some of the maintenance fees that we have on the parks. I know with being a soccer mom, we go out to those soccer fields every Saturday, and they are soaking wet because they're watering right before we're out there playing, and watering on a Friday night while the kids are out there practicing. And then, at the end of the season, they have to tear up the field or rebuild and resaw it from there on out. So, we might be able to save, even if it's a few pennies. A few pennies are up together, will give us a couple more pennies. So, if we continue to do that kind of stuff, we may be able to slowly inch away and build a park here and a park there.
Well, I would have two kinds of parks that are unfinished in the community. One is across the street from my house. It's half-finished because the development in our area hasn't been completed. So, we'll see parks like that finished when we have future development. Other parks haven't been finished because they were under-budgeted when they were started, and we're gonna have to just find money from the general fund when it's available to finish those parks. And number three, I think is more important, is how do we get out of this in the future? And that is by doing what they're doing in Village Seven, the Lewis partners, Lewis Communities, will be building the parks themselves as they build the phases of the development. I think someone else down here, one of my cohorts, expressed that, Mr. Gilbert, "Let's not dig ourselves into this hole. Let the people that are doing the development build the parks." And you know what? So far, my conversations with them have been very positive. They said, "We'd rather build the parks. We got a five-phase development. Phase one's done, the parks are in. It's easier to sell two, three, four, and five," because they see all the amenities that are already there. So, let's not continue digging these holes in the future.
Mr. Cross got it right. Future parks should be built by the developers as they come online. As for those parks that remain unbuilt right now, there are many solutions for those. Some of them are simply the completion of development in a given area, like Lincoln Crossing. And I'll give you an example of that. There are 143 new homes about to come online there over the next two years. $700,000 in PFB funds will go into the park fund out of that to complete the parks. So, that helps. Also, the public-private partnership that's involved in Geminis Park, the 501(c)(3) that's been formed to raise money, I sit on that board, I work with them on that. The city has sold land to the Lincoln Crossing HOA, and has immediately returned the funds from that sale to the Lincoln Crossing HOA to help build out Geminis Park. Comsites West has put about $300,000 into that project because of the cell towers that they've located there.
Well, Paul and Dan actually hit part of my answer here because we do have additional PFB fees, public facility element fees, which pay for parks coming in from new development. There will be more new development over time, and that will be one way to replenish your resources. Second one is refinancing possibly of Melrose bonds. This may or may not be possible depending on how things are looking in the financial industry, but we may be able to do that. One additional area is that we have some possible savings from the bypass payments from the Melrose bonds. If we do not have to spend that money, we can potentially use that to offset the paritization. Partnering with Linking Crossing and the HOA and the nonprofit has been a great option. But, one thing that's important, legally, sometimes you can't do things. Such as, we can't require all developers to build parks. We must allow them to pay a fee if they so choose. And so, it's important to understand that there is a legal framework that we work under. Well, we did touch on this a little bit earlier, but this is where priorities are so important. And for us as a community, I think Paul mentioned it earlier, public safety is the reason why most communities incorporate. And I think, you know, I mentioned earlier about selling off assets to possibly build parks, and some of it can go for that. But I think when you have 16 or 18 sworn officers for a city our size, I think that needs to be the priority first. And then, maybe second priority is paying back some of the debt, the $22 million PFB negative balance, $4.8 million negative balance in the airport fund, $4.6 million negative balance in the redevelopment fund. And we want to build parks, but we have to set priorities. Long-term, of course, we talked about this development, development is a key part, but that takes time. And so, that's not gonna happen right away.
I agree with what Mr. Cross said. When he and I were on the planning commission together, we agreed pretty much like 99% of the time. We held many developers' feet to the fire when it was within our boundaries to do so. I think we will complete the unfinished parks as soon as we can financially, new development, as well as new businesses coming to Lincoln. And I think once we get those built, the city will be a better place. I think the hard lesson that we learned is that we need to have parks finished around the time the houses are. And I think the school district can also take a lesson from our lesson.
The most powerful thing an incorporated city has is zoning and control over the land. And when a developer comes in, I don't believe in the statement that you can't always hold their feet to the fire. That development agreement, which has to come from the city, has a lot that favors the city. And so, I think that starting soon, I hope, we do not allow any future building unless there's a development agreement, spelling out to everybody who's going to move in there, whether you're the first one to move in or you're the last one to move in, you know it's there, you know if there's parks, they will be built by the developer regardless of the cost. I served on the city council that did that all through its growth years, and they never had a problem with failing to have the parks finished when the development was finished.
I think we have time for just one more question. This is kind of a tough question, so listen carefully, and it's a two-part question. We're gonna begin first with Ms. Schipper. What is your greatest strength, and how would it help you on the city council? And what is your greatest weakness, and how might it hinder you?
Good question. I'd have to say that my greatest strength is my determination. When I put my mind to something, I see it through to the very end, no matter what it's gonna take. I feel that once you have a decision made, you need to stick with it, and you need to see it through to the end, and not give up no matter what gets thrown in your roadblock, and continue to push forward till you can get to that final goal. My weak point? I would probably say just have to be my kids, you know? They just do, you know, they just come up to me and give you those puppy dog eyes. So, you know, if citizens come up to me and give you their puppy dog eyes, I may fall and help them do what they need to do as well.
I think my greatest strength is twofold. My management experience and my ability, my analytical ability to break things down into their component parts and make decisions. My greatest weakness is wanting to solve problems. So, a lot of times when people bring me a problem or a question, I want to jump to a response. What I've learned to do is, especially when I disagree with someone, to correct that weakness is to acknowledge their position, explore what they think, listen to what they have to say before I respond with my answer. And I've found that many times, I've actually changed my mind. So, becoming a better listener and explorer of other people's opinions when I'm making a decision is the way I overcome my natural desire to just respond and answer something. And I think that'll make me learn much more and make me able to make more informed decisions.
Greatest strength is probably my constant... Greatest strength is probably my constant desire to understand all aspects of an issue, not to jump to a conclusion. I'm always looking for every bit of information that I can get on an issue before I make a decision, and like Dan, I have found myself being persuaded by an argument and totally changing my position. This business is all about relationships and being able to work with other people. That is also a very big strength of mine. My greatest weakness is probably that no is not an acceptable answer. We need to find solutions to problems, and no simply gets in the way.
Well, I'll say my greatest strength is probably my problem-solving and negotiation skills. What you find in this business is that you have to work with others effectively, you have to find solutions to problems, you have to look to the future, and you have to also balance the needs of the party you're negotiating with with your own needs and find a solution that works. We've done this on the regional sewer, we did, we're doing this currently on the regional sewer pipeline, we're doing this on the Plaster County Conservation Fund, balancing cities' needs, counties' needs, and coming up with a solution that will benefit everyone in the community. My greatest weakness? You know, it's either, I guess it's part of my unwavering commitment to honesty and finding the truth, because it's frustrating me during campaign seasons when we can't find truth in certain issues, and, you know, I just have a hard time with that, and I will always, as I've always done, be truthful with my community.
Well, this is probably the toughest question tonight, because I don't know, I'm not an able gazer, I don't just stare and think about, you know, weaknesses and strengths. I would probably say my greatest strength would be my willingness to listen, to listen to all points of view and to make a decision based on when I've heard all points of view. If I had to say a weakness, and some people, you know, sometimes it's a strength, but I'm analytical in nature, which means I'm an information gatherer, and I need information. I make a decision on something, I want to know all the facts on it, and sometimes that can logjam things, it can slow things down because of the review process, but I think it's necessary, and my personality is analytical information gatherer, and so that might be a perceived weakness by some who just, they want to get things done and they want to get it done now, so.
I think the greatest strength that I bring to the table as a council member will be my Planning Commission experience. I have eight years of experience and proven track record of making good decisions for this city. I follow it up with my education and my work experience. Weakness, which I see as a challenge, is balancing time. I realize serving on the city council takes a lot of time, but if we have a strong city manager that is running the city well, and if we have employees that are doing what they should, then I don't think as a council member you need to micromanage the city. I'm not looking to get on the council so I can run the city. I'm looking to be on the council so I can be your representative and provide oversight to the city.
I'd say that my greatest strength is that in my life experiences, having traveled around the world, having worked for big corporations where I had to make hard decisions, lay off people during bad times, being able to deal with that, deal with it properly, and have some empathy, and be able to wake up the next day and face whatever the challenges are, has been my greatest strength. My greatest weakness, I think, is probably the love of my family. I find it very difficult to tell anybody in my family no, and it was that way when I was raising my kids. I've got some grandkids now, and I have trouble saying no, and I come from very meager means. I've been somewhat successful in my life, and so I appreciate people that don't have it all and need a little help.
I'm going to start off with my weakness, and this is kind of embarrassing, but really my weakness has to be number one is I am a workaholic. My greatest strength is going to be that being a business owner, especially in construction, I deal with a lot of contracts, so I have to be very thorough, I have to look at everything, and also if I'm ever presenting anything, I have to see, is this going to benefit or hurt my company? So, I would say being very thorough, and I'm pretty open-minded to people whenever they want to give me their opinion, and I rather enjoy being able to complete a project. That is something my own personal satisfaction is, being able to work with others, especially people who are strangers, and getting the job done.
Okay, we're going to move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. We're going to reverse the speaking order from our opening statements, so we'll begin with Ms. Schiffer.
First off, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and taking the time to submit your answers for us. I want everybody to continue to ask the hard questions. I want you to take everything that you've heard tonight back home, do your research, do whatever it takes to get the answers that you want. If you need, call upon any one of us, I'm sure they'll all agree, we're all open for questions. You can email us, call us, stop us on the street, we'll be happy to answer your questions. I believe that financially, securing Lincoln, we need to first reconsider the budget. We need to allocate funds for vital support for our fire and police, that's a number two priority. We need to properly use the funds to, that are earmarked for certain taxes to be paid and to have them paid for now and for the future. We need to eliminate the lifetime benefits for all council members, and also we need to establish policies to ensure to preserve Lincoln's financial stability. I appreciate your support, and I will use my voice to represent you, the people of Lincoln, with pride and clear focus on our objectives. Thank you.
As I've stated before, I'm not planning, I shouldn't even say planning, I'm absolutely not going to be taking on anything with the CalPERS, and like I've stated before, that salary is going to be donated back to the community, to the taxpayers. As far as with my belief is that, as everyone knows, is that not everyone can participate in city council meetings. A lot of people do have lives, and they're working, and they can't come in and give the opinions, and therefore they have to really rely on your city council in order to make the decisions that are the best and fair. I believe I am someone who can do that, again, as just being a business owner, being able to prepare for the worst and also planning for the good times, the bad times, and anything that can happen in between, and I look forward to your vote on November 6.
Okay, so now you've heard from the incumbents and the other candidates, including me. If you're pleased with the results you have seen in the city in the last several years and want more of the same, then I guess you should support the incumbents. However, I think you've heard enough about the failing policies, some of which the city has at this time, and in many cases, you have been directly impacted by the inaction to fix these. We need to run the city like a business. Why? Because the city is a business, and we need to apply sound, proven business principles. Please take one of my flyers and visit my website. There you'll see my agenda for the city and specific plans to accomplish these goals. Now you know where I stand, and I ask for your vote. I thank you for coming, and I thank you for listening.
Why are there nine candidates running this year? Because the citizens are outraged. Most citizens are not happy with the current state of our city and its leadership. Lincoln needs an overhaul from the inside out. We are now discovering these financial problems when times are bad, but it is because of fundamental flaws in culture and mechanics of the city that these problems started when times were good. A sudden influx of money today wouldn't help us too much because the city does not know how to manage your taxpayer dollars. Read the audit if you don't want to take my word for it. I'm not running because I'm a career politician or nothing else better to do. I'm a husband, father, I have a full-time job and a full-time family, but I'm willing to carve out the time necessary to serve on the city council if elected. I'm a hard-working citizen, tax-paying citizen like every one of you. I ask you to vote for Common Sense and Change on November 6. I ask you to vote for Alan Quenka, the people's choice for city council.
One of my fellow Lincoln taxpayers, the verdict is in, and that verdict goes against the leadership that has failed us for several years now. What Lincoln needs is new leadership. New leadership that insists on balanced budgets. New leadership that insists on accountability and transparency. New leadership that encourages growth. New leadership that strengthens the bottom line. I promise you, if I'm elected, I will bring my business experience to the table to have the city run more like a business. I also promise you that I will work for you. You won't work for me. I also will not accept Citygate Healthcare Pension, and I will not support tax increases for the general fund. I am endorsed by Councilman Heidrich, Councilman Nader, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 6.
You know, sometimes I feel like Ronald Reagan. Here we go again. You know, sometimes you hear things and you hear change for change's sake is good, but I'm going to ask you a question. Do you love Lincoln? Do you love where we've been, where we're going? We have a plan. We outlined part of that plan. Unfortunately, we can't really discuss the whole plan here tonight because in a minute, you can't really give a good answer. So, I'm going to encourage you to take a look at every one of the candidates, ask them the hard questions, but you know, I'd love to have a debate, because I can tell you tonight, I've heard some things that were really disturbing and are patently false. Please, come talk to me, and I'll be happy to outline those for you. But, at this time, you have to look at this. We need experienced leadership. We are at a crossroads. We have a number of great things happening. We have partnerships with Plaster County, with ONG, with our neighboring agencies, and by the way, we have had twelve years of balanced budgets, and we do currently still have reserves. So, you know, I'd ask you to come, take a look, take a look at the facts, let's discuss. Thank you, and I hope for your vote on November 6.
You know, Lincoln's greatest asset, without a doubt, is its people. It's all of us pulling together in difficult times and working together to find solutions and solve our problems. I've shared with you this evening some of my vision for Lincoln's future. There's much more to that vision, as Spencer said, than the limited amount of time we have here to respond to your questions allows, so I hope you will feel free to come up and talk to all of us and continue the conversation, ask any questions that might still remain. But if you remember nothing else from tonight, remember this, Lincoln is stable. We have a balanced budget. We have a plan to move forward towards a more prosperous future. And Lincoln, like our country, is, many people have said it, we're at a turning point. Turning points are opportunities. We can turn towards a strong, stable future and work together to strengthen our community, or we can take a U-turn and head back towards discord and upheaval and economic downturn. Even in these difficult times, and maybe because of them, we've accomplished a great deal. I'd like to return to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your questions. I believe in the positive future for Lincoln, and that is going to happen, we're going to have a positive future if we can execute our general plan, attract the businesses and residents that will contribute to that general plan being completed, and a lot of our financial problems will be solved. In talking to regional builders, well, they've said one of the most disturbing things they have heard in this area, and what would scare them away from this community, is the negativism being expressed by certain candidates would make them not want to come to Lincoln because they don't like the discord and the negativism. So, I would encourage a positive move forward. Let's learn from our mistakes. We can list them out, learn from them, and move forward. Develop our economy, develop our community, make it a better place to live. We can always do better, but I think it's a pretty darn good community to live in, and I'm proud to call myself a Lincolnian.
Well, that concludes our program for this evening. Let's now give all the candidates a big round of applause. Thank you all for participating tonight, and thank you to all the volunteers who helped make this forum possible. This forum was designed to impart information to voters in accordance with our belief that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We hope that the insights you gain from this forum will aid you in making your decision. Please be sure to vote on November 6 and help make our democracy work.
I'm here for the lead.
Thank you.
Thank you.